While we wait for all the viewers to enter Zoom, I want to remind you that Vote 411 is now available. Vote 411 can provide you with information about the candidates you will be voting on and have a printout feature so that you can print out your choices and take them with you to the polls. And now for tonight's forum. Good evening. I'm Anitra Steele, Chair of the League of Women Voters Kansas City's Forum Committee. Welcome to our forum for independent city council at large seats. The forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platt Counties. This forum will be recorded and available on the League's webpage, l w v k c dot org and on YouTube. We send a special welcome to League member Sharon Hannah, who organized a watch party for independents voters. The League of Women Voters is a trusted grassroots, nonpartisan organization whose members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we neither endorse or oppose or political parties or candidates, we are directly involved in sharing the hands-on work of democracy and important issues. Our mission is to empower voters to have the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to vote. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you all to know the other League members volunteering with me. Cindy Schmidt is the timekeeper and our Zoom is monitored by Dave Montjoy. The public has sent in the questions via the League's website, l w v k c dot org. Tonight, we welcome our moderator Charlie Keegan, a KSHB Channel 41 News and Politics reporter. Welcome, Charlie. Welcome to our forum.
Thank you so much, Anitra, and thank you to everyone joining us today. I'm delighted to join you for this candidate forum for independent city council. Tonight, we'll hear from the candidates running for the opportunity to serve independence on the city council in an at-large seat. The seat will serve the entire city. Our forums last about 90 minutes. I'm going to ask each candidate the same question. These questions have been selected from a list of questions the public submitted to the League of Women Voters. The order of candidate responses has been determined by a random rotation for each question. Each candidate has 90 seconds to answer a question. You'll get two minutes for a closing statement before we end. Now, all of the candidates running for these seats have been invited, and we welcome candidates participating in tonight's forum. Candidates, please answer the question asked and stick to the topic. There will be no rebuttals during today's forum, but you can go back to an issue during your two-minute closing remarks, if you remember to do so. All right, let us begin. The first couple of questions are all about you, the candidates, and then we're going to get into specific issues later on. So our first question is just, please introduce yourself and tell us what experience you will bring to the city council. Again, we're going to go in a random order for each question. Starting us off for this one is Charlene Gray.
Hi.
So please introduce yourself and tell us the experience you'll bring to the city council.
I'm Charlene Gray. The experience I would bring, I'm a business owner. I've been a business owner for about almost 10 years now. Also, I sit on two commission boards with the city. I have experience with nonprofits. I have experience with different community events that I do. I deal with a lot of residents already in the city, so I know what they need and what they're needing. So that's the experience that I bring. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll go to Cody Atkinson next.
Yeah, I just want to thank League of Women Voters and you, Charlie, for doing this, trying to get out and educate voters about this really important decision. My name's Cody Atkinson. I am running because I really believe in a servant leadership ethic. At 17, I joined the Army as a medic. My unit was actually the 325th Combat Support Hospital here in Independence at 24 and Sterling. I chose Rockhurst University for my bachelor's degree because selfless service and service to others is a core ethic of that university. I have my master's in public administration. I'm finishing another bachelor's in sustainable agriculture. But I also bring a depth of experience working, building partnerships and coalitions. I've worked for nonprofits now for eight years, directly in the public policy field on everything from economic development to animal welfare. In fact, I helped our city repeal the ban on pit bulls. I also helped our city pass the state's first animal cruelty task force. I sit on the Board of Adjustment, and I'm also Chair of the Jackson County Animal Welfare Committee. And I also sit on the board of a statewide animal welfare organization. So I have a really great depth of experience with partnerships and coalition building, and I just really want to get out there, meet folks, and help make this city better.
Thank you. Jared Fears, you're next.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Appreciate the work the League of Women Voters has done. You know, I've lived in Independence since I was a, we moved here as a family when I was 11 years old, 1972. Graduated from high school here, went to college, came back home, and eventually ended up working for the city for seven years. During that process, I got my master's in public administration. I'm also a certified financial planner. But probably most importantly for our viewers is I've spent the last four years as a city council member, and that's given me a lot of good experience. I've, I think I've navigated that learning curve well, and we're doing a number of good things in Independence as a council right now. So we have more to do, but we're off to, we're doing good things.
Thank you. Jackie Dorman.
Hi, I'm Jackie Dorman. I have been a lifelong resident of Independence. In fact, I was only, not a resident, for just a few years when I was in college. I have a bachelor's degree in communications and then a master's in management. I worked for a, one of the best companies to work for in Kansas City and did project and development of people. So I have a huge focus on how we treat our human resources within a city and how we get different groups to work together. I've been a real estate agent for the last 21 years, and my greatest pride is helping the first-time homebuyer be able to purchase a home, letting them find those avenues that allow them to afford a home and learn how to gain equity in their home. I have three children. I am the widow of a police officer, that was a 30-year police officer eligible for retirement at the time of his death. And I have three children. One is a police officer, one is a school teacher, and one works in healthcare. We have a heart of service, and I feel that it's time for us to see a better independence, and it's time for fresh voices, and let's get the community involved and start investing within our own community.
Thank you so much. Candidates, as we go on to the next questions, you know, if you're third or fourth to answer and you'd like me to repeat the question, feel free to ask, okay? You know, so question number two. What sets your leadership style apart when it comes to building consensus among a diverse seven-member city council? For this one, we're going to start with Jared Fears.
Well, that's a really good question, and I think it's really important because, you know, ultimately, as a council member, you are one voice out of seven. And so in that process, it's really important to listen to your other council members, listen to the community, gather as much information as you possibly can gather before making a decision. Of course, it's important to listen to what staff has to say because staff usually is the, they are generally the more informed people on lots of the things that we address as, as council members. So we have to listen to all those parties, and then you talk among yourselves. You try to reach common ground. Don't all, as a, I would say that as a council right now, it's very fair to say that we often don't agree. We often, you know, it's not uncommon to not have a 7-0 vote in our, in our process. But we, while we often may not agree, we always work towards consensus, and I think we are being very effective as a council at the moment. And, and so that's what it's about, is building that, that consensus and then moving forward as, as one body.
Thank you. Jackie Dorman, you'll go next. Tell us about your leadership style.
I welcome a diverse group of voices. I think that that's how you achieve the greatest goals. If you just have people seeing things in the same direction, then you're not going to look through all the challenges that you could face. And I think it's super important to bring people in right off the bat and have a diverse group that's looking at the issues, whether it's the, those that own the businesses, the residents, and have them be engaged, and then make sure that there's a method that the community is aware of all the discussions that are going on, who's involved, and enhance our communication out to the community.
Thank you so much. Cody Atkinson will answer next.
Yeah, so the council and mayor make up seven-member body, and I've been a member of a seven-member body my entire life as, you know, having five brothers and a sister. So I'm well aware of how that dynamic works. But I, you know, I've received direct training on leadership through the military. I graduated with honors from the Army's Warrior Leader Course. But also, the past eight years, as somebody who's worked in nonprofit, smaller nonprofit originally, you really have to reach out and learn as much as you can from other people. You have to be there to listen, not just lead, and understand that policymaking is difficult. It is hard work. It is not always fun. I really enjoy it, but it can be hard to disagree with somebody and still be able to sit at the table across from them and hash something out. You know, I've knocked somewhere around 1,500 doors at this point, met people with all sorts of different opinions and backgrounds, and I think that has made me more aware of just how much work needs to be done to move this city forward. And I'm going to lean on my experience with my nonprofit background and coalition-building background and move this city forward that way.
Thank you. Charlene Gray, you're live.
Yes, thank you. Okay, well, with my leadership style, actually been a business owner and also been on the board of nonprofits and also ran a nonprofit at one point for about six, seven years, I understand what it means to actually have a diverse board. And actually, you know, you need that diversity. You need everyone that has different, has different values, has different opinions because everybody can bring something to the table. However, we all need to understand that when we're bringing something to the table, like Jared said, we may not always agree with each other, but at the end of the day, we really need to make sure that whatever we're doing, whatever I'm doing as a leader, I'm really looking out for the city, the, the residents, and also for just us being a better city. So my leadership style would be just to be that person that listens, that truly listens. Not saying that I'm listening, but I'm really not. And also getting the residents engaged because I do know, been out in the community a lot, that I am, that is one thing that they're really wanting, is to kind of be more engaged into different things that are happening in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Our third question has to do with this city council position you're running for, being an at-large position that serves the entire city rather than one specific, you know, district or ward. How do you plan to balance the competing needs of different parts of the city? You know, think about the historic part of Independence versus maybe the more newer, modern, eastern part of Independence. So for this one, we'll start with Jackie Dorman.
I think that the way that you balance the needs is, when I see the older part, the square, as our history, and I think it's important that we embrace that. And I think most of the people throughout this city do value that history, and it's something we can take pride in. At the same time, we can still grow other parts of the city, but we need to start doing more to have community back in the heart of our city and having people feel engaged. I know the Inglewood Arts District is doing a lot to try to have more community engagement, and they're doing their Fridays where they're open to the public, and that's becoming successful. And if you look around at other cities, that's what they're doing, is they're bringing people to some of those areas, and they're getting that human connection. And I think we need to do more of that.
Thank you. Jared Fears, you're up next.
All right, thank you. Well, so, you know, the way that, that I have endeavored to be involved in the whole community and not just where I live is to participate in a lot of events, participate in different places, different activities, you know, attend various events in various parts of the city, whether they be homeowner association meetings or just groups of neighbors that are getting together. And, you know, I've been able to do that pretty effectively, I think. District four, I've attended their meetings. District four has a group that gathers pretty regularly, and I've attended a number of those meetings. I've been to events at Inglewood, in Fairmount, in, in, up at the square. District two is less organized in some respects, but there are things out there, church events, other things that I've been to in, out in District two. And then here in District three, which is where I actually live, you know, we've had a number of neighborhood meetings. We've had forums, open forums. We had one just not long ago about a proposed development. And so being active and being engaged, being out in the community gives you that sense of what is going on in the whole community, not just in the district.
Thank you so much. Charlene Gray, you're next.
Okay, well, for me, how I would do it is what I'm doing right now. It's just building relationships in all the districts. When there's something going on and I find out about it or I'm invited, I'm going to make sure that I'm a part of it. And sometimes I've been, I've actually helped organize some things all through the city. So for me, it would just be basically be, it would be basically what I'm doing now, is just continuously building those relationships and really trying to get people that feels like their voices aren't heard to make them feel that their voices are heard. So that's what I would do.
Appreciate that. Cody Atkinson, you'll wrap us up here.
Yeah, I think in a time of social media, people have never been less heard. We are doing less in-person meetings. We are listening to one another less across the table. I would really love to engage community leaders throughout our city and the different districts and really get some more community organizing done in the same way that Southwest Independence Community Group has done. They do regularly scheduled meetings where they get community members involved. There's that public opinion. They bring out elected officials. They bring out city leaders, folks from different departments, and really get a good update on what is going on. I live in the historic neighborhood, and I have been told about there used to be a newsletter and community meetings here. You know, just getting folks back to sitting across from one another, getting folks in person together, that's really important to me. And that helps you really start to connect, to organize, to understand the problems that folks are facing, the things that they want to see done, the change that they are seeking in this city. So it all does go back to listening. So that's, that's kind of where I come at it from.
Thank you so much. Our next set of questions will get really a bit more on specific topics that folks there, voters in Independence submitted to us. And so Cody, you're going to be the first one to answer this question. Utility costs and management have been a central point of debate for years in Independence. So what is your long-term vision for Independence Power and Light? Should the city continue to own this utility? Should the city explore alternative management or even sale options?
Absolutely not to that last option. IPL needs to be owned by our city. That ensures that our residents are the number one priority, not shareholders, not somebody who doesn't live in Independence, doesn't engage with our community. IPL needs to stay IPL and owned by our residents. Additionally, I really like the idea of moving toward that independent management board. The city council, while we have a diverse background on city council, I don't think anybody comes from that sort of utility management. We need experts leading that sort of area. It is a complicated subject, is a complicated topic, and we need a dedicated board who oversees that. Yeah, I just could not be more opposed to that. Additionally, we need to be seeking out greater power generation and a kind of flip-flopping on how things are set right now. We have a very high residential load compared to commercial load, and that is much more expensive to do. We have to run a lot more power lines for that sort of thing. It is significantly more complex. But if we get some more commercial power users, we can start to even out those utility rates and hold them steady and stable. You know, I don't want somebody's utility bill to be the reason they lose their home, and that's what I'll be working towards.
Thank you. Charlene Gray, you're next.
Okay, can you repeat that again, please?
Yeah, this one's long, so I get it. What is your long-term vision for Independence Power and Light? Should the city continue to own the utility? Should the city explore alternative management? Or should the city even consider sale options?
Okay, yes, the city should continue to own it. And yes, they should have a separate board of people that are experiencing utilities. Just, just like Cody said, with, you know, with us all sitting on the, the city council, we really don't have that experience in utilities. And so having a board, I think, would be great because then you can bring in people that has done this, and then they can advise us. However, the, the city council should still, at the end, be able to be the people that has the final decisions along with that advisory board. And then as far as like helping out with the utilities, that's, that's just going to have to be like an ongoing situation to where we're going to have to be able to get bigger companies to come here. But however, that's also a process because for us to be able to get them, we have to actually get our utility plant up to par to be able to help, to help supply their needs. So it's, it's an ongoing process. It would be something that I would have to look at once I got there and say, okay, what, what can we do and what can we not do? So that is my answer.
Thank you so much. Jackie Dorman, what is your long-term vision for IPL?
I agree with Charlene and Cody. I think that Independence absolutely needs to continue to own Independence Power and Light. As a long-term, lifetime resident of Independence, Independence Power and Light has really helped us financially over and over. And so when I hear conversations about even the sale of it, it's super concerning to me. I agree that we need to have an expert group that works with this. I think that as a city, we need to really step back and do a long-term plan of all these things and have high-level people that come in and say where Independence wants to be. Because yes, there's a lot of issues with, we'll have a developer come in, and then we're not able to provide or we're not providing them the utility, the power that they need. And it seems like we're dealing with things, one, as each problem arises. And I think we need a long-term plan that we take to the citizens, and we get their input on that plan. And we need to be conscientious that we do work toward making their utilities affordable. And the one way to do that is through sharing the expense with businesses.
Great, thank you so much. Jared Fears, talk to us about your long-term vision for IPL.
Hey, great. Well, you know, this, this question of sale versus maintaining it as a city department is one that we wrestled, that this council has wrestled with. Two years ago, we spent time, we hired DKMT, and they came in and did a study because we, we wanted to know what the options were relative. Is it, is it sellable? Would we get anything out of it? Or should we keep it as a, as a city utility? And the conclusion was definite that we should keep it as a city utility. No doubt about that. We need to run it like a business. We need to create this Board of Public Utilities that we're in process of, of working on, that we'll be sending it to the citizens for a charter change to allow that, to have board members with various types of expertise to give us the expertise needed on that board. You know, Independence Power and Light is a $170 million entity. And, and depending on how things go in the future, it could grow substantially to be a much larger entity. And so we need to continue to work on, on governance questions and run it as efficiently and effectively as we can to save the rates for the citizens. The idea is that we want to make sure we're giving the citizens the best rates possibly that we can.
Thank you so much. Our next question kind of remains on the topic of utilities. And Jackie Dorman, you'll answer this one first.
Okay.
How will you address the volatility of utility rates while ensuring the infrastructure for water and electricity remains modern and reliable?
Oh, okay, can you repeat that?
Of course. How will you address the volatility of utility rates while ensuring the infrastructure for water and electricity remains modern and reliable?
So that is a pretty complicated question. I do believe that, that co-op that the city council is working with helps us to do that. I think that we need to look. I do have cautions because I hear from the citizens that they want to make sure that we're protected, that where we have some sort of a utility co-op where we can kind of share and whatever, I think that, that that would help us. I think we need to make sure that our utilities are a priority, that we do service them. I know that a lot of our equipment is antiquated and that we did not upgrade that. So that's some things that we need to address and determine what the most cost-effective way is. It might have been a little bit less expensive had we updated some things down previously, but we haven't. So now we need to look at what our best option is. So I don't know that that's a clear and clean answer, but I think we need to look at not just Independence, but across to other suppliers and across the United States and all of those costs and do what we can for our citizens. We own utilities. We're one of the few cities that do. So I feel like that does give us an edge, and so we need to make sure we use that power for our citizens.
Great, thank you so much. Jared Fears, you're next on addressing the volatility of utility rates.
Okay, well, the council does set the rates, but what we do to help us set the rates is we hire folks to help us with rate studies. And so, for example, we're in the very beginning process of doing a rate study for Independence Power and Light, for our utility rates. And what that rate study does is it goes out, and there are engineers that go out, and they take a look at our current transmission and distribution system. They look at what it costs to buy power and, and pay because a lot of power that we bought is, or that we generate, we don't generate much power. Most of it's passed through from other places where we buy it. And so it's important for us to listen to those, those rate studies, to gather that information that we can gather, and then to set the rates based on that information. And that's, all that takes into effect or into account the cost of transmission and distribution systems of water, of electricity, to be able to get us the kind of system that we want. We have a good system. We really have a very high rate in terms of the effectiveness of our system. We just have to make sure that continues at an effective cost for our citizens.
Thank you so much. Cody Atkinson, the question now goes to you.
Yeah, so again, this kind of harkens back to needing more commercial development. Right now, rates vary, our power rates vary a, a great deal because we rely so heavily on residential draw. So whenever everybody comes home, they want to crank up the AC or right now the heat, and that makes energy prices spike. So we need to have some more commercial development to kind of level out that power draw, and that can stabilize our prices. As far as our other utilities, our water and sewage, that I think we need to be working to try to identify problems much earlier. So trying to install the latest and greatest that we can within our water lines, our sewage lines, and making sure the problems don't happen in the future. You know, even when we're talking about this, I, I was speaking with the head of IPL. He would love to bring back a program that we used to have in which we would do free energy audits of homes. If you ask them, they would come out, they would check your home and say, hey, you need insulation here, there, whatever. And they could even help you do that. And that can help with energy efficiency as well. So it, it's everything from those small things like putting plastic over your window or blowing in insulation to your attic, to the big things like attracting new businesses that help us level out that power demand.
Thank you, Charlene Gray. Your last year for this question about addressing the volatility of utility rates.
Okay, well, I would say let's start with trying to get more businesses as well to get in here. And then also, I think once we get the meters, that also helps because you would have a little bit more accurate reading. And then also with those meters, the new meters that they were talking about, the more digital meters, that it can also tell you, hey, during this time of day, you're using more utilities. So then maybe you can adjust them during, during that period of time. And also, it's just, to be honest with you, it's just a little hard to be able to say, hey, this is what I can do right now. But for, for what I, from what I understand, that if we really get those meters and we start to maintain what we do have a, a little bit better, that may help as well. So that would be my answer.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And Charlene, you're gonna answer our next question first.
Okay.
And it has to do with the Independent School District. It is gonna ask for a sixty million dollar bond in the April twenty twenty-six election. So how do you see the city and the school district working together to improve community outcomes?
Oh, my goodness, I'd love that. It's, it's so funny that you asked that question because right now I'm actually working with Dr. Grant, the interim city, I mean superintendent. And I, I think that once we actually start seeing the value of the city and the school district working hand in hand together, it actually makes better communities because the school district has the children all day long. They have, they have people's children more than the parents have the children. And then if, if, if the city can partner with the school district, sorry, I have so many things in my head. I, I'm excited about it. If the, if the city can partner with the school district to help with whatever. Oh, my goodness, sorry, I've like getting excited. But anyway, if the city and the school district can partner together, it actually makes the city a much better place. It makes us more healthier. It makes businesses want to come here. It makes younger people want to stay once they graduate from college and come back home. It's just the school district and the city really have to work hand in hand for a city to grow. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks. Cody Atkinson, you're next on how you see the city and school district working together to improve community outcomes.
Yeah, absolutely. So when people look at where they want to live and raise a family, they are looking at cities that are safe, they're clean, and they have great schools. We need to be working alongside our schools as, as much as possible to ensure that we are offering students and parents a safe learning environment, something that is enriching, and a true partnership with the city government, whether that be with the school board or the city council. That also includes bringing in private industry and our labor unions to partner on things like workforce development. We need to make sure that here in Independence, we are educating the leaders of tomorrow. We have an incredible community that looks out for one another, and we need to make sure that we are very future-forward on those sorts of deals. A, as far as that investment, you know, Kansas City Public Schools, there was a massive bond that was just passed. My wife is a pediatric occupational therapist for Kansas City Public Schools. Proud husband moment, she also just graduated with her doctorate and got published, so very happy about that. But you know, they, they are really looking at investing in those schools and making them better and keeping folks in that school district because public education, i- it's what set this nation apart from the get-go, and it's what is going to set us apart in the future.
Great, thank you so much. Jared Fears, question's yours.
Right, thank you. Well, sixty million dollar bond that is gonna be asked of the citizens of Independence is, is one of several over the last, really, couple of decades that have really helped Independence upgrade their, their, you know, school supply. And this one in particular is gonna go towards Fairmount and Cordy in schools in a, a bigger way, but also smaller improvements to the, a, a lot of different schools. You know, Independence has been really effective with the Independence Academies, and that's really helped kind of the students to come out of school either ready to go to work or in a lot of cases, or ready to go to, onto college, whichever the case, whatever path they choose. And so I think those Independence Academies have done really well. The other thing about working with the school district, and I think we've had a good relationship with the school district, in fact, all three of them that really impact us the most, Independence, Fortis Sage, and Blue Springs. They all sit at the table at our economic development meetings. And so they all come to those meetings, and that's really, I think, an important place for us all to work together towards economic development for the whole city because it helps, you know, it helps all the school districts, the city, and other jurisdictions, the other taxing jurisdictions as well.
Thank you so much, Jackie Dormin. How do you see the city and school district working together to improve community outcomes?
I think that that is a great approach, and the school district of Independence has done a really good job at including real estate agents in some of their information sessions. They'll invite real estate agents to tell them what they're doing because they want agents selling their community. And when you attend that, I am a real estate agent, so I've attended them. It's very impressive what the Independent School District is striving for. And so I think having that partnership of the city work correctly and both of them communicate with a great approach. Independence has been very successful. When we took the Van Horn School into our area, the test scores reflected a much higher test, text, test scores. Our rankings improved. There's a wonderful elementary school in the, what was the Kansas City School District that's brand new, that many of my young, young home buyers want to be in that school, not in what, in the past would have been. They wanted to be in the Truman High School. So Independence has done a great job of lifting up their communities and enhancing their scores. And I feel like by having a partnership with the city and both of us working together and getting the word out would be tremendous. It would lift the entire community up.
Thank you so much. All right, our next question has to do with the Nebius Data Center. What do you think are the primary pros and cons of this partnership for the city's residents? And Jared Fears will be the first to answer this one.
All right, well, that's certainly a hot topic for folks, no doubt about that, and something that a lot of folks are interested in, in Independence. So relative to pros and cons, the pros are that it's more, it's more development in our community, which results in more jobs. It results in more activity in that particular area of town. It results in more income for the city and for other taxing jurisdictions as well. And so those are, those are the pros. The cons, the biggest con at the moment is helping people understand what all the pieces of the, the puzzle are and how, how it's gonna either affect them or not affect them. That's, that's probably the biggest con at the moment. It's hard to say exactly. We don't have a, a final design. We haven't, the, the, all the sound studies, the environmental studies, they're not all in yet. They're still coming, and so that information is still much yet to be gathered. But it is important for people to understand that there's a lot of misinformation out there as well, just as much as there is good information. And we're working hard to try to create some opportunities to get more of the actual information out into the community.
Thank you so much. Charlene Gray, you're up next with the pros and cons of a partnership between the city and this Nebius Data Center.
Okay, well, I could talk about the pros first. I'm, I'm pretty much gonna probably echo Jared on that as far as like bringing, bringing a bigger business here, which we talked about that could possibly help with the utilities, with sharing the bill with the current residents that we have. Also, accord to what they're saying, there could possibly be like, I think, a hundred to a hundred and fifty jobs. So there, there's some jobs right there, so that helps out with the community. And as far as, far as cons, I mean, only thing I can think of right now, and like Jared also said, it's, it's us not really knowing the sound barrier, the safety, those type of things. So those would just be the cons, but until we actually know that, that, that's probably only two things that I would say for the cons. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you. Jackie Dormin, you're next to answer this one.
Okay, so I would agree that the positives for that is that it would be some additional income coming in for our city. We are becoming a world that data centers and AI is going to become our future. So I think that we need to probably embrace the concept of that. I also think that they mentioned that they would do training, like that they would partner with the community college and maybe do some things to help train our future generations on some skills, even if it's not necessarily for their data center, that they would fund that and they would fund our schools. I think that the challenge is, what we are seeing is that a lot of these data centers are not good neighbors, and they're not necessarily keeping the promises that they've made. So I feel like as a city, it's imperative for us to ensure that we protect our citizens if this is something that we do and that we are greatly involved with the people that it's going to impact them. I've had a lot of people reach out to me that have concerns that live there about their home values and whether they should be selling and what the noise will be and what the lights will be. So I think that there's work we need to do and commitments we need to make sure are held.
Thank you so much. Cody Atkinson, what are your thoughts on this data center?
Yeah, I'll start with the cons. There is no public contract written in black and white on a lot of the promises that they've made. So things like our noise or our lighting around that area, those are real concerns that people have. Nobody wants to live next to what, you know, amounts to a, a road just constantly pumping out noise every day. So I would really like to see that in black and white. Also, we have not had a true town hall. They did have a meet and greet. I attended that. I was able to ask a lot of questions. I was really happy that I was able to get direct answers from Nebius representatives. But a true town hall that allows folks to ask questions and it's answered at one time, I think is really important in building that community trust. But, you know, we can work on that. We can try to get that in black and white. We can stay on top of them and ensure that those promises are being made because I don't want to shy away from the fact that this is anywhere from a thirty-five to a sixty percent increase in our general revenue funds. We can bring back bus services. We can repair our roads, our streets, our curbs, our sidewalks. We can make sure the entire city is ADA compliant and even beyond to make sure it is truly accessible for everyone of all ages. We can make sure that our fire, our police, our dispatchers are all fully staffed and paid what they deserve. So there is tremendous opportunity in that, so it's not all bad, and I would just like to see a little bit more in black and white.
Great, thank you. Several of the next questions will deal with public safety. And Cody, you're gonna answer this next one first. It starts with crime rates and police staffing are consistently top of mind for residents in Independence. So what proactive measures do you support to address the underlying causes of crime in our local neighborhoods? Cody?
Yeah, so as I said earlier, folks wanna live in a community that is safe and clean. That happens through our police and fire, but it also happens through community organizing. What we've seen in places like the city of Baltimore where folks went out and they found those community leaders, those individuals who have a background with their community directly and can go out and diffuse situations before they ever happen. It's a really fascinating program that I would love to bring here. But community organizing in general is so important because that helps you see those red flags early on. We can tell when somebody is kind of spiraling out of control, and we can act as a community and reach out and help them and support them and get them resources they need. Something as simple as making sure our website covers all of the homelessness and addiction resources that we have in this city and in this region would be a really big step in, in making sure that we don't let the bottom fall out for people. You know, one of the things that really gets under my skin is when you hear somebody speak about somebody experiencing homelessness or drug addiction issues, and they, you know, just go get a job, you bum. That just drives me nuts because there are so many barriers for folks to get back on their feet if they don't have strong structures around them. So I wanna make sure we are leading with that structural build-out to get folks back clean, safe, and on their path to a, a better life.
Thank you. Jackie Dormin, you're next about addressing the underlying causes of crime in Independence.
Okay, I agree with a lot of what Cody, or with everything that Cody has said, but I think that one of the main things that we do need to tackle is we need to lift up our community. I had mentioned this in the last forum, but we have a very large population that is renters. So they, a lot of our residents don't feel the ability to have homeownership, which I think that instills a lot of pride and stability. I do think that we have some phenomenal partners that are non-for-profits like Community Services League, and they do things to help people. We just don't have enough funding. So I think the community outreach and funding and addiction services, as well as paying for our police and fire and supporting them with the different programs. They have a lot of different community stations that they've set up to help them also have a presence in the, those areas and build the rapport. So I think that one of the best things we can do is partner with the rest of our community, not try to do everything on our own with outside people. Let's get our community involved to solve our problems.
Gotcha. Charlene Gray, you're next here to answer this question.
Okay, thank you. Well, one thing that I would say, and I think all about a lot with me being a business owner, is workforce development. And the reason why I say that is because I have hired some people that has had issues getting jobs, and it, and it's also helped them to stay out of trouble. Sometimes people don't realize this, when people are working and they're being productive, it cuts down on crime. Because at that time, the times that they would be out doing shenanigans or different things like that, they're actually at work and they're being productive. Now they're able to take care of their families. You know, you have less domestic violence. You'll have people not walking the streets, different things like that. And then also, we need to get back to our, like our city, like our block, like community watch, basically. I, I, just this fall, I attended the, oh goodness, Police Citizens Police Academy, and we talked a lot about that, about getting the community involved to help, you know, watch your block. Because that used to be really big back in the day. They were telling us here in Independence. And so, and it was so effective. So I think now when people are always on, you know, Facebook and things like that, instead of doing that, why don't you come out and talk to your neighbors? So then that way, if you see a suspicious car in a neighborhood, you can report it. And so I just think it's more getting everybody involved in workforce development as well. And so I just think it's more getting everybody involved in workforce development as well. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Jared Fears, how would you address, uh, underlying causes of crime in Independence?
All right. Well, I think, uh, a lot of what's been said has been good. Um, community policing is really important. Um, I believe that, you know, our next police, uh, chief, we're getting ready to, well, the, the next city, the new city manager will hire the next police chief. And, um, and so when that happens, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that that police chief has a, a solid experience in community policing. And will be able to bring some of the, those kinds of, uh, programs to our city. And, uh, I, I like, um, what Charlene was talking about relative to Neighborhood Crime Watch. You know, we have i- in our neighborhood, uh, we have, um, Neighborhood Crime Watch program, where, um, we call the police if there's a problem. And, um, and that's what neighbors need to do is they need to pay attention what's going on around them. And, and, um, when the time is to call, you need to call. The other thing that I would, would wanna say about that is that, you know, uh, we've done some good things in the city to try to help, uh, crime relative to, uh, the, the, um, potential crime through homelessness and things of that nature by working with CSL to have the Independence Together program. We have the ARCH program for mental health kind of issues. Uh, and so all of those are good things, uh, a- as well as hiring more offices. We, we've hired more officers in the last, um, four years than i- i- there were like thirty-eight vacancies when I started in, in this job. And we've hired a number of officers. We have ways to go, but we've made progress.
Thank you so much. All right, Jackie, you'll answer the next question first, and it's pretty s- s- specific within public safety. Um, how would you address police car chases and the impacts they have on other drivers?
Um.
Unin- un- uninvolved drivers?
Right, um, so I had mentioned that my husband was a police officer and so is my son. Um, so I'm pretty familiar with this. Um, as the mother of a police officer, we don't want our child driving fast. So however, I will say, um, the crime in Independence, because they know that we chase, is down. So typically they will avoid our city. The number of accidents that happen, especially with uninvolved people. Now the one that's running might end up in an accident. Um, but with uninvolved people is a very low percentage, like two percent. And when there is a car chase, they're not just chasing somebody because they stole a sweatshirt off of a store. I mean, they're, they're chasing someone who's a danger to our community. And we have found that it's been, it's effective for them to do these chases and to prevent people from entering our city, cause they know. Um, you can talk to, um, the police officers or the fire department and when one of them wrecks, they'll say, they told, my friends told me not to come through Independence and run. And so it's a deterrent. And I think we can't handle more criminals in our city. So if we have a deterrent, I have concerns about eliminating it.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much. Cody Atkinson, you're next here to address police car chases and their impacts on uninvolved traffic.
Yeah, I, I wanna work with our law enforcement on, uh, what, figuring out which reforms need to be made. Um, it is very clearly dangerous when a chase, uh, gets up to a hundred miles an hour and a crash can occur. That is a lot of energy on impact and there are innocent people's lives at stake when that happens. Um, so reforms obviously need to be made for the safety of our community. Um, but I, I don't want that to just come from the city council. I wanna make sure that we have experts in that room, uh, really combing over how this can be changed and what sort of things can be changed within our city, uh, to prevent that from happening as well. Um, I know people are not fans of roundabouts, but roundabouts do slow down traffic. Um, if you have straight lanes somewhere, you are able to fly down that road, uh, without concern. Uh, speed bumps are another big thing. Uh, we can slow these chases down if we have some infrastructure upgrades as well. But ultimately reforms, they need to be a, uh, collaborative project, uh, because reforms need to be made. It, it, again, i- it's incredibly dangerous when some of these, uh, chases happen through our neighborhoods. Um, I, I live in a neighborhood and have multiple times had, um, somebody flying down the road and police flying after them. Um, kids are in the street. They've got cats and dogs walking through the streets. So we just need to make sure that there is a, a full community involvement on, on these sorts of reforms.
Appreciate you. Jared Fears, you're next here on addressing police car chases.
All right. Well, you know, this has been, uh, an item that's been in the, in the news and things recently. And we did have a study done, uh, this fall, which has raised some concerns. Uh, and yet at the same time, what Jackie said is correct is that, you know, the, the crime in Independence is probably lower than it would be otherwise because we do have a reputation of, of being, um, more, more stringent in some regards. Um, but what I would say about that is we have to use common sense. Uh, in the, in the, um, um, study that was done, there was a list of ten item, ten, ten scenarios where a chase, chases occurred. And, um, and some of those were just things that we need to not chase for. Um, and so, you know, there are more common sense scenarios. If somebody has a, um, an expired tag, that's probably not a reason to be running a hundred miles an hour chasing after them. Um, but on the other hand, the other piece of the puzzle that's really important is the technology is developing to be able to do a number of things from a technological standpoint to track where, um, where these people go. And so we can, um, we have some of that capability now that we need to probably use more of. But we need to also invest in some of that technology to allow us to, um, not have to chase and use, um, technology to our benefit in that regard.
Thank you so much. Charlene Gray, your answer here about addressing police car chases in Independence.
Well, I, um, I agree with the police chase. I agree with what Jackie said and what, what Jared was saying. As far as like, if we stop the police chase, that the crime rate will go higher back up. Because people at that time would not take our police as serious. However, I do know that there are some technology that could probably be installed and, you know, into the cars or at wherever it needs to be to kinda make them a little bit more safe. And I think once we do that, and then also like Jared said, just kinda use some common sense. Sometimes you may have to back off if you notice that it's getting a little too crazy or you can't catch up with them as a policeman. But as far as like police chase, no, I, I feel that we have to keep them here in Independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, uh, is, uh, and Jared, you'll answer this one first. How will you address homelessness within Independence city limits? Jared Fears.
All right. Well, um, I, I kind of already touched on this a bit in that we have, uh, invested in some things relative to, in an effort to, uh, help, um, those that, that are homeless. Um, we've, uh, tried to put some to work through the Independence Together program. Um, I, I've lost track of the most recent number of how many tons of trash have been picked up around Independence because of, um, the work of the Independence Together program. We, we added, we started with one van and trailer. We now have two vans and trailer. And Community Service League is doing a really great job, um, managing that program for us. We're also working with, um, a, on the south side of town with the Good Shepherd Community of Christ Church. That there's a drop-in center that's being developed out there. And that will, uh, help, uh, I think it to address some of the needs of, of, of homeless people. And so, um, you know, the, the question about homelessness is not just a, you know, what, what are you gonna do? The question is what are we gonna do as a community to try to help those folks? And yet at the same time, that doesn't mean we provide opportunity for them to do things that are illegal anyway. Um, and so we, i- it's a balancing act between, um, helping people out and also saying, you know, there's limits to what we'll, we'll be willing to handle, uh, and, and be willing to, um, deal with in, in our city.
Charlene Gray, you're next to address homelessness in Independence.
Okay, well homelessness is, is such a difficult thing because there are so many different, different facets to homelessness. You have people that lost their job. You have people that just wanna be homeless. You have veterans. You have people that have, may have mental illness, drug, drug use. So I felt Independence has really done a really good job by trying to help out with, sorry, with, sorry, Independence have done a good job with trying to help the homeless with those different facets. And I, I do know from, for me personally, I volunteer at CSL and also Hillcrest Transitional Living, where I do life skills training. And so, you know, I get to see a lot of people there. I get to talk to them. I, I go out on the street with my church and talk with homeless people. So, I mean, for me to, it's, it's just hard for me to say that I can, I personally can do one thing. Because Independence is already doing several things and maybe, you know, we could come, we could come together and see what more we could do. But me personally, I mean, I, I can't say that I can do anything more than what the city is already doing for the homeless. So, cause I feel that we're doing a pretty good job at it. Thank you.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Cody Atkinson, you're next, next to talk about homelessness.
Yeah, so there are a number of, uh, nonprofits within Independence that are really doing a lot of incredible work. Uh, there was a really great, uh, study session not that long ago that detailed, uh, all of the ways in which these different organizations, uh, helped with various facets of homelessness and drug addiction. Uh, so we can start with simple. Again, just get something on the website that says, hey, are you experiencing this? You need to go there. Uh, and we can go all the way to the much more complicated and that would be getting a really centralized, um, whether it be an abandoned strip mall that we convert or, uh, some sort of facility in which, uh, we can have things like counseling, we can have, uh, documentation prepared, we can have community court, uh, and get those records expunged after some level of community service. All of these wraparound care services that are so needed to, uh, really get folks off their, o- off the ground and into, uh, the workforce and into homes. Uh, on touching on workforce development, it's working with private industry and again, labor unions on, you know, maybe it's just getting a hammer in somebody's hand. Uh, we have the Missouri Works Initiative that will hopefully be coming to this city. Um, that is really wonderful at getting folks back to work into good paying jobs. Uh, we also have a really incre- I mean, just such a cool thing. I was talking to a Kansas City Councilman the other day. Um, and he is jealous of us, of Independence, which is great, uh, because of our ARCH program, the Alternative Response to Community Health. Uh, we need to make sure that that program stays funded, is run seven days a week. And we get several more, uh, folks out there and employed within that program because they do such an incredible job.
Thanks, Cody. Uh, Jackie Dorman, you're next here to address homelessness.
Um, I agree with what everyone has mentioned. Um, a couple of things I think that we just need to expand what we're doing. Um, Charlene had mentioned Hillcrest, Community Services League, some of these, um, organizations. And I think by, um, the more that we can fund those and have those grow and also the workforce development, give people a job, um, the more that we can help them and find out what their needs are and get them where they are working, where they do have a roof over their head, where they see a way to put food on their table, um, have heat in their home. Um, the less homeless we will have. There will be those that still have mental health issues that we need to, um, approach them with the resources that we have. But, um, the more that we can do with the partners, um, that we have within our community, I think that's the most effective way to get the most done.
Thank you so much. All right, this next question will be our last question on public safety and policing. And Charlene Gray will be the first to answer it. Uh, so Charlene, the Independence Police Department has faced sta- staffing challenges and high overtime costs. So what is your specific plan to improve recruitment and retention for first responders like police officers?
Okay, so since we're talking about police officers, once, I, I believe once we get a new, um, police chief and hopefully he's more, he, he'll be, he or she, sorry, the person, would be, um, okay, sorry, I, I wa- I drew a blank. Okay, so how, what I would think about doing is, we've already passed a bond for the, um, police to get the raises, to keep them. And so I think now what, what we'll have to do is with the police chief is for that police chief to kinda, um, really hit the ground running and showing that they support the police, officers that are working for them, for that person. And also that the community is also showing that we respect the police. Because in order for us to have police that want to work here, we have to show that everybody from the police chief down to the citizens appreciate them as well. So I think if we have, if we have the backing of the police chief and the other people working there and also the citizens, I think that would help with the turnover and also help people to wanna come to work because now they know that they have the backing, they have the support that they need while they're working. Because that's a very hard job to do. And so while you're doing it, you wanna know that you have someone that has your back, starting from the police chief all the way down to the community. So, that's my answer.
Appreciate you. Jared Fears, you're next here on a specific plan to improve recruitment and retention for first responders like police officers.
And so we were actually faced with that situation with our police officers where, um, a, a number were, uh, anticipating to leave because of some changes to, um, salaries in, in Kansas City. So, um, we addressed that, um, fairly quickly. Citizens responded and voted in a tax, uh, a sales tax to help, uh, fund those, um, police officers. And, um, and so we made, you know, their wages and their benefits more competitive. And that's what, um, what we did to, to improve the opportunity for, um, police officers to come here. We've hired a lot of new police officers since we've done that. We've hired away from other organizations and we did, we've hired, uh, new, new recruits that, uh, people that have never, you know, been a police officer. Uh, we also need to change, you know, improve the working environment, uh, for, for our officers. And, um, we're in the process of making some changes there for, at least that will affect at least some of the officers. We need to give them the technology and the, the tools to do the work that they need to do. And, um, and that's, you know, what makes a good workforce is, uh, building a morale in that particular environment. And that's, uh, a, a big job of our next police chief.
Thank you. Jackie Dorman, you're next here about, you know, strategy to improve recruitment and retention.
Well, um, I would say that, um, for police officers, um, and especially for police officers in the last few years, I think that it's been a challenge to, for many areas, but Independence has, um, faced a lot of challenges with, um, retaining and attracting. We have had a ton of attrition. Um, we've had turnover in leadership. Um, and we don't seem to have, um, the equipment that the officers use often is not kept in good working condition. Um, and their pay has been low and, um, the benefits aren't what they used to be. Um, there's a lot of pain for, um, the Independence Police Officers and the Fire Department. I mean, the, um, salaries are not, um, keeping up for the job that they're doing. Like, most people wouldn't do that job and the salaries and benefits are not really, um, taking care of it. So, um, I think citizens of Independence have always supported police and fire. And I think it's time that the city and the city council ensures that when the citizens support them, that that many is for making sure they have top of the line equipment. Um, and that they have leadership, um, that's not, um, in interim. I mean, we're in a rebuilding phase. That's all there is to say. Like, there's, uh, a lot of attrition that's occurred recently.
Thanks, Jackie. Cody Atkinson, you're next here on, uh, recruitment and retention for police.
Yeah, uh, well, we really need to nail the next police chief hire. Uh, it is no secret that, uh, we have had a number of, uh, bad headlines out of that department for a number of years. And that affects morale. It affects culture and it affects, uh, recruitment and retention. Uh, people do not want to work here if they think we're going to have a lot of turnover with our police chief, uh, if things are chaotic at the department, uh, and if we are not making sure that we stay, uh, competitive with other, um, communities around here. Independence, uh, it is a higher crime community than if somebody were to potentially take a pay cut and go to Grain Valley or Blue Springs. Uh, we need to make sure that compensation, while it will never, uh, fully compensate for being injured, uh, on the job, uh, i- at least is more attractive. Um, we also need to be making sure that we supply, um, our police and fire and dispatchers with everything that they need, um, to reduce crime in the first place. Uh, some of this community policing to make it less dangerous for them. Uh, but ultimately, uh, we Uh, but ultimately, uh, we need to back them by making sure they are fully staffed. We cannot ask folks who are already doing an incredibly stressful and dangerous job to be working overtime. That's how mistakes get made. That's how frustration boils over. Uh, and that's how the community starts to turn against our police force. And we do not want that. Uh, we want to make sure we are working in this city together uh for the betterment of everyone.
Thank you so much. That concludes our public safety related questions in this section of the questions. Our next one, Cody, you'll answer this one first, is about uh kind of development in a way. What is your strategy for revitalizing the Independence Square and ensuring it remains a viable cultural and economic hub?
Um, we have to get uh city council back to the square. I think it is pretty absurd that uh we have a beautiful historic square um that means so much to this city and city council is now being moved uh almost to Blue Springs. Uh, so we need to make it a priority uh for our government in the first place. Uh, but number two, we need to be just as friendly for small businesses as we are for big businesses. Uh, we give a number of tax incentives for um development by these large industry, but we don't do the same for our small businesses. And on top of that, it's hard to open a business here. I've spoken to a lot of uh small business brick and mortars here and they're thankful that they have friends who are lawyers because they would just throw in the towel uh a lot of times because it is such a pain to know where you are. Uh, we've got to get into twenty twenty-six, uh get more things online. Unless you have to get something notarized or have an inspection, there is no reason for you to be dragged down uh to go and meet with somebody in person to uh have something filled out or double-checked. Um, it it would be nice for folks to know exactly where they are uh within that licensing process as well. Uh, know that uh i- immediately if they've goofed up on their paperwork so they can get that fixed as quickly as possible. Folks are spending thousands of dollars on renovations for buildings that can't open uh until everything's approved. So we need to make sure that that is getting turned around as quickly as possible. So they're not draining their bank accounts on their hopes and their dreams because we can't get it together.
Thank you. Jackie Dorman, you'll be next to talk about a strategy for revitalizing Independence Square, ensuring it remains viable culturally and economically.
I believe that the Independence Square is critical to our city. I think that our history and those old buildings are what make us special. Um, and if you look at most of the areas or cities that do thrive, they embrace those old homes, they embrace those old buildings. Like, that's what keeps people coming back. So I agree with what Cody said, that we need to make this the heart of our um of our city. Not have, uh, when I showed like a few people um that like where the new city council is, a couple of agents were like, that's Independence's city council building? That seems odd. It's not normal in cities. Um, I um, I think that we need to, I I agree with Cody that we need to be more friendly to small businesses. I think that we we keep making changes that are like concrete, but why don't we do some incentives for these small businesses? One, make it easier for them to get a license, attract diversity into the square, lick different kinds of businesses into the square. And then why don't we do some incentives to really like upgrade the the face of those businesses? Give them some money to make it, you know, not to change it and tear it down, but to make it shine again, bring back the historical beauty of it. Um, it seems like we give a lot of money to these big corporations and TIPS and tax incentives and we don't do much to help our small businesses.
Thank you. Charlene Gray, you're next here about uh the historic Independence Square.
Okay, ditto Jackie and Cody. I'm gonna kind of pretty much say the same thing as far as like is of with the small businesses. I do believe that if we invest in our small businesses a little bit more than what we are, I think that would help them be able to get into the square. And then the square would be able to also be be finish up some of those facelifts that they're trying to do down there. Because when you have, when you have a business in there, they can, they can go ahead and get your window art and everything done for you. And the fa- and the facelift really doesn't cost that much because now you actually have someone in there with their products. And also, um, I think a lot of times, a lot of people don't realize that we have the Innovation Center here in Independence. Where small business, small businesses can go and get help when they are first starting. Because Innovation Center, they do a lot as far as like helping you with your business license and different things like that. So I think we really need to promote the Innovation Center more and that would also help the downtown, the Independence Square as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jared Fears, you're last to answer this question.
All right, so um Charlene is correct in that the Innovation Center has really done a good job to help develop small businesses and then launch them. And a number of those have actually moved to the square. Square is a really important part of our community. Um, it's a, it's a central part of our community. It's the history there is critical to um, you know, lots of things that we do as a and tout and tourism and things of that nature for our community. Um, so uh, you know, the the Independence Square Association is in part funded by uh Community Improvement District. And what that does is that provides funding for things like facade improvements and things of that nature. So those are, that's helping in the in the square. We um, you know, I I know there's a lot of concern about um getting used to new parking and things on the square. But um, that was three, over three million dollars that was put into new uh square parking improvement and streetscape and things of that nature. Really important thing for our community. Uh, you know, things get old after, you know, forty, fifty years and you gotta, you gotta do things uh and change things up a little bit. Um, the Mid-Continent Public Library will hopefully, um, that's yet to be determined. But hopefully, they're gonna build a a new uh um main office campus there on the square. And if that happens, that will help drive more com- more people to the community as well or to the square as well. So, square is an important part of our community and um, uh, we need, you know, I think we need a satellite office up there for the city. And I've talked about that um quite a bit, but um, uh, I know I'm out of time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, candidates, it's now time for our two-minute closing statements here from each of you. I want to personally thank all the candidates for spending time with us today and sharing your thoughts and uh backgrounds with everyone. I'd also like to ask the candidates to share the League of Women Voters website with, you know, the people you interact with over the next uh week before Election Day and ask them to, uh, you know, check it all out and of course encourage them to vote on February third. Uh, okay, we'll get started with the closing remarks. We'll do them in the same order that you answered the very first question. So Charlene Gray was our first answer there. So you now have two minutes for closing remarks.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for having me tonight and giving me the opportunity to share my heart and um some plans that I have for the city. I I just want to um just say that, you know, I'm running for the Independent City Council because I love our city and the people who live here. I've built a business, I cre- I have created jobs, I've volunteered with nonprofits. I help organize Juneteenth celebrations. I've always given residents opportunities to succeed. If elected, I will fight for safe neighborhoods, responsible growth, and city government that listens, acts, and delivers results. Independence deserves leaders who makes a real difference and I'm ready to do, and I'm already doing it every day. And one last thing I do want to say is, whether I'm elected or not, I'm gonna continue to do what I do in the community because I I truly do love our city. And I know we have nothing but good things in the future for us, no matter who gets in there. I'm I'm still for Independence. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Charlene. Appreciate that. Cody Atkinson, you're next with the two minutes for closing statements.
Yeah, I I want to say thank you to League of Women Voters. It's an organization that's been around since nineteen twenty, uh organized shortly after uh women got the right to vote in this nation in nineteen nineteen. Um, it's been around for so long and doing in- incredibly valuable work. So thank you so much for uh hosting this and Charlie for you uh being here. Um, but especially to the folks listening and wanting to learn more about how this city works and the future of our city. Um, you know, I've done what I can, um, walking through rain, snow, ninety degrees, nineteen degrees. Uh, I'm trying to meet as many of you as possible, uh but this is a great way to connect as well. Uh, so please continue to reach out, send me your questions, your thoughts, your ideas. I really appreciate those. Uh, I hope that we can meet in person at some point and really, I get to know one another. Um, Independence is such a a wonderful community where everybody has been uh so kind and inviting uh and really ready and willing to give you their thoughts. Um, so I think we are a better city whenever we get out there and we listen and we collaborate. And that's what I want to do. I want to be a partner for you, with you, uh and organizing our community uh to make sure we are building for the future. Um, I mentioned it at the forum last week, but in eight years, our city is looking at um about forty percent of our community being uh at the age of fifty-five or older. We have budget problems now. As folks move over to looking at retirement, they're really pinching pennies and they're probably already pinching pennies. Um, so they're going to stop spending as much. Um, and if we don't get that new involvement and new residents here investing and making sure we continue to grow, um, this city is gonna have even harder problems and harder decisions to make. So I'm here trying to look uh forward and make sure we are building and preparing for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jared Fears, your two minutes for closing statements.
All right, well, thanks, Charlie. Well, first, I want to thank uh those that are responsible for this event. These are important for us. Um, for those that don't know me, I moved uh with my family to Independence in nineteen seventy-two and I've lived here since. I have a background in finance, uh public administration, and I'm a certified financial planner. I've been serving on the council now for four years. I learned about service to others from family, uh church, and scouting. I think to be effective on the city council, you have to have a heart of service. You also have to be willing to listen, which is what I've been doing this winter as I've walked door to door. Uh, listening is critical. Doesn't mean we'll always agree, but uh I do respond to questions and call- from calls and emails and um and look forward to visiting with more folks at the door. My goal has been and is always to help make Independence a better place to live, work, and to raise families. We've made progress toward this uh with things like the GO bond, economic development projects, public safety efforts, housing developments, and more. Uh, in some cases, I led the effort. In other cases, I supported my colleagues. I also want to mention that as a current council member, I chair the city's Audit and Finance Committee. I serve on the Mid-America Regional Council Board for the city. And I represent Independence as a member of the Policymakers Council for the American Public Power Association. While I believe we're making progress, one thing we haven't yet solved is is a difficult financial situation. I'm in a unique position with my financial background to help guide the city in this regard. As a city, I believe in many ways we've turned the corner towards prosperity, but we still have work to do. We have made progress, but it's important to continue to be vigilant in our efforts. The fact is, the job I started is not done and that's why I'm asking for your vote on February third and April seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Dorman, wrap us up with your statements, please.
I want to um take this opportunity to thank um the League of Women Voters for um including me in this to get to share what my thoughts are and um Charlie for you um moderating this for us. Um, I mentioned that I have lived in Independence my entire life. I love Independence. Um, I still have phenomenal friends that are a support system that I went to grade school with. Um, I think the best part of Independence is the people. I also have all three of my kids live here and now I have four grandchildren who live here. So when I look around and I see empty buildings and I see um where people are struggling to get by and where they're unable to um purchase homes and to thrive in this city and where we've lost industry and we've lost opportunity, um, it breaks my heart. So that's why, at this point in my life, I've decided it's time for a change. And I think the way that we make Independence better is to put what our citizens want first. I think sometimes um the city will um go down a path thinking that that's what we want. And I think that we really need to make it much more public where people are involved and listen to their input and see where the tax dollars spent and what's important to them. Um, and um, make sure, I mean, the citizens of Independence, for as long as I can remember, have always supported our first responders, fire, police. It's always been a priority. Um, when other areas were upset with their um police department, I know that our citizens were bringing food into our police stations. So the citizens support our first responders. Um, we need to make sure that when they support our first responders that and the employees or that they want a certain thing, that we ensure that their tax dollars are used for what purpose they expect it to be used for, um, and that we're listening to them on what our future is because it's their future.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you to all the candidates for taking time tonight to share your stories with us, talk about your priorities and initiatives should you become the next city council members here in Independence. I want to welcome back Anitra Steele to wrap things up for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, audience, for your interest in the February third election. A recording of this forum will be available on the League's website, L W V K C dot org. Please take a moment to share our forums via your Facebook, Nextdoor, and other social media channels and of course, your neighbors. And remember, for voting and candidate information, visit L W V K C dot org and vote for one one dot org. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.